The Board would now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortmann, Alderman Vollmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnoldowitz, Alderman Wessels, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Florida, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vicaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Crewson, President Reed.
Here.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Ortmann, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Carter, twenty-one present.
Quorum being present, I'll ask everyone in the chambers and the galleries who's able to stand to please rise for prayer. We will be led today in prayer by Reverend Shawn Jones, the son of my pastor, Reverend Sammy Jones. And actually Shawn baptized me for the second time in my life, most recently. But before we begin that, I'll ask everyone to join me in a silent moment of prayer for the Arnoldowitz family and friends of his sister who recently passed.
Let us pray. God our Creator, as we come here on today to do the city's business, God we ask that righteousness and mercy would reign supreme. God we ask that compromise and as well as our best judgment, God that you would lead us what to do and how to do it. Be with these alderpersons here, our president, our mayor, our comptroller, all our city officials, that as they work tirelessly for our city, that your will might be first on their minds as well as the empowerment and the betterment of our city, the city of St. Louis. We ask that you would bless our city, our state, our nation, and our world as our prayer we pray in Christ's name. Amen.
Introduction of our guest, any introduction of our guest, Alderman from the ninth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to have for my honored guest today, Ronnie Hour.
Alderman from the twenty-third.
Yes, I'd like to have as my honored guest today, Al from the firefighters, Gary from the painters, Joe Steiger, Tom Walsh, and all the members of the St. Louis Police Officers Association. And we thank you guys for all your hard work.
Thank you. Alderman from the twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to announce as my honored guest today, the former comptroller, Bervis Jones, and resident of the twenty-sixth ward. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the fourteenth.
Good morning, President Reed. I'd like to have for my special guest today, Senator Harry Kennedy, committeeman of the fourteenth ward and special assistant to recorder of deeds, Sharon Carpenter, Isaac Di Lorenzo, special assistant to the license collector, and Gary Otten from the Painters District Council.
Any further introductions? Any further introductions? I want to first, let's give a round of applause to the members of the police department that came down to begin a new relationship with the Board of Aldermen and bring us breakfast this morning, let's give them a round of applause and thank them for the time. With us is Joe Steiger, Ed Clark, Mike Kegel, Tom Walsh, Mike Hertzberg, and Jeff Roder. So let's give them one more round of applause. Thank you, guys. Thank you, guys, really appreciate you coming down tonight. Alderman from the tenth, like to wrap this up.
Thank you, Mr. President, and members of the board. I actually have a guest. My guest has come out of retirement. The World Series does that to him. I am proud to have here today, as we go into the World Series weekend playing the Red Sox, the man who told Enes Salater to steal in 1946, Mr. Fred Stephan.
Alderman from the thirteenth, you recognize on approval of the minutes.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to approve the minutes of the October eleventh meeting.
Move by Alderman from thirteen, second about Alderman from twelve, any discussion? All in favor, signal five percent, aye. Pose, motion carries, report to city officials.
Report of city officials can be found in sections A, B, and C of the agenda and have been placed in all Aldermen's mailboxes.
Dispense with items seven through ten. First reading of board bills.
Board Bill two-eleven, sponsored by Alderwoman Young and ordinance approving a blinding study and redevelopment plan for 2224 Indiana containing a severability clause. Board Bill two-twelve, sponsored by Alderwoman Florida and ordinance approving a blinding study and redevelopment plan for 4215 Connecticut and containing a severability clause. Board Bill two-thirteen, sponsored by Alderman Ogilvy and ordinance approving a blinding study and redevelopment plan, sixty-nine oh-five Wise and containing a severability clause. Board Bill two-fourteen, sponsored by Alderwoman Davis and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for twenty-nine oh-five through twenty-nine thirty-seven Olive. Board Bill two-fifteen, sponsored by Alderman Carter and ordinance to rename a public park formerly known as Dwight Davis Park and is dedicated as Gregory J. Carter Park and repealing ordinance six-six-two-seven-one. Board Bill two-sixteen, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy and ordinance recommended by the Board of Estmen and a portion meant authorizing a supplemental appropriation amending ordinance six-nine-four-three-two commonly referred to as the City of St. Louis annual operating plan for fiscal year 2013 through 2014 appropriating and reducing in the amount of $250,000 from the Water Division and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill two-seventeen, sponsored by Alderman Schmidt and ordinance approving a redevelopment plan for twenty-seven twenty-eight Cherokee. Board Bill two-eighteen, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance approving a blinding study and a redevelopment plan for twelve fourteen South Boyle Avenue. That's the extent of our first reading.
Reference to committee.
To the Parks Committee, Board Bill two-fifteen, Ways and Means Committee, Board Bill two-sixteen, to the Housing Committee, Board Bill two-eighteen, and to the Neighborhood Development Committee, Board Bills two-eleven, two-twelve, two-thirteen, two-fourteen, and two-seventeen. That's the extent of reference to committee.
Second reading.
The following board bill was brought out of the Parks Committee, Board Bill two, Board Bill one-eight-five, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderwoman Ingracia and ordinance pertaining to all parks which are owned and maintained by the city prohibiting any persons not accompanying a child from being in or upon the confines of areas designated as children's play areas which are owned and maintained by the city and containing an emergency clause. That's the extent of second readings.
For dispensal line item fourteen, also for the various different members of the Board of Aldermen, the police are still sticking around to have an opportunity to say hi to you. So if you get a chance, swing over and say hi to them and, you know, exchange information. Perfection consent.
Board Bill three, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance approving the petition to establish Hampton Birthhold Community Improvement District. Board Bill one-forty-five, sponsored by Alderman Rhodey and ordinance establishing a stop sign for all northbound and southbound traffic traveling on Tower Grove at Swan and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one-forty-eight, sponsored by Alderman Villa and ordinance approving the petition to the city for the creation of the Carbondale Commons Community Improvement District and containing a severability clause. Board Bill one-nine-four, sponsored by Alderman Villa and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Services establishing a public works improvement project for South Broadway Streetscape Project Phase Two from Courtois Street to the existing bridge over River De Pair Channel containing a public work emergency clause. Board Bill one-twenty-five, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy and ordinance authorizing and directing the street commissioner to take out necessary actions to honorarily designate the forty-four hundred block of Cook Avenue as Sylvia E. Miller Way. Board Bill one-thirty-six, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy and ordinance establishing a stop sign for all northbound and southbound traffic traveling on North Sarah at Finney and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one-thirty-seven, sponsored by Alderman Kennedy and ordinance establishing a stop sign for all northbound and southbound traffic traveling on North Sarah Street at CD Banks and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one-thirty-eight, sponsored by Alderman Arnoldowitz and ordinance establishing a stop sign for all northbound and southbound traffic traveling on Macklin at Finkman and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one-thirty-nine, sponsored by Alderman Wessels and ordinance establishing a stop sign for all eastbound and westbound traffic traveling on Walsh at Fender Place and stopping southbound traffic traveling on Fender Place at Walsh causing it to be a three-way stop intersection and containing an emergency clause. Board Bill one-eight-three, sponsored by Alderman Moore and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Services to conditionally vacate equestrian and pedestrian travel on the East West Alley and the North South Alley, North vacant on the East Cass on the South and Grand on the West. Board Bill one-nine-five, sponsored by Alderman Moore and Alderman French and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Services establishing a public works and improvement project for New State Avenue improvements from St. Louis Avenue to Natural Bridge Avenue containing a public work emergency clause. Board Bill one-ninety-six, sponsored by Alderwoman Flowers and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Services establishing a public works improvement project for North Broadway improvements from Thrush Avenue to Walter Avenue containing a public work emergency clause. Board Bill one-nine-seven, sponsored by Alderman Bosley and ordinance recommended by the Board of Public Services establishing a public works project for the traffic management enhancement phase two involving the purchase and installation of software and equipment upgrades to the city traffic operations center and containing a public work emergency clause. That's the extent of perfection consent.
Alderman from the thirteenth, you recognize on the motion for the perfection consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the board, I move for perfection of the aforementioned bills on the consent calendar.
Move by Alderman from thirteen, second about Alderman from twenty-fifth, any discussion? All in favor, signal five percent, aye. Pose, motion carries. For dispensal item sixteen, Madam Clerk, at the request of the sponsor, could you place Board Bill number one-forty-three, Committee Substitute, on the regular third reading calendar?
I'm sorry, what was that number?
One-forty-three Committee Substitute. Place Board Bill number one-forty-three, Committee Substitute, on the third reading regular calendar, regular third reading calendar from the third reading consent calendar. One-forty-three Committee Substitute. Alderman from the twenty-second, you recognize.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for suspension of the rules for the purpose of moving the following board bills on the third reading consent calendar. Board Bill number three, one-forty-five, one-forty-eight, one-ninety-four, one-twenty-five, one-thirty-six, one-thirty-seven, one-thirty-eight, one-thirty-nine, one-eighty-three, one-ninety-five, one-ninety-six, and one-ninety-seven.
It's been moved by Alderman from twenty-second and seconded by Alderman from the twentieth. Any discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortmann, Alderman Vollmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnoldowitz, Alderman Wessels, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Florida, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vicaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderman Crewson, President Reed, Alderwoman Tyus, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Florida, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Carter, twenty-three, aye votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion of Alderman from the twenty-second. Madam Clerk, please place the aforementioned bills at the tail end of third reading consent calendar.
So noted.
Third reading consent.
Board Bill ninety-one, one-ninety-one, one-eighty-four, one-twenty-one, one-seventy-one, one-ninety, one-eighty-seven, one-eighty-eight, one-eighty-nine, one-twenty-six, one-forty-four, one-eighty-two, one-forty-nine. And three, one-forty-five, one-forty-eight, one-ninety-four, one-twenty-five, one-thirty-six, one-thirty-seven, one-thirty-eight, one-thirty-nine, one-eighty-three, one-ninety-five, one-ninety-six, and one-ninety-seven.
Alderman from the thirteenth, you recognize on the motion for the third reading consent calendar.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for third reading and final passage of the aforementioned bills on the consent calendar and request previous roll.
It's been moved by Alderman from the thirteenth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-fifth. Discussion, hearing no discussion. It's been a request for previous roll. Hearing no objection, motion carries.
That's the extent of third reading consent.
Third reading, report of engrossments.
Board Bill one-ninety-three, sponsored by Alderwoman Young and Alderman Ortmann and ordinance adopting the International Fire Code 2009 Edition with changes as the fire code of the city and containing a penalty clause, a savings clause, a severability clause, and an emergency clause.
Alderwoman from the seventh, you recognize on the third reading and final passage of Board Bill number one-nine-three.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I move for final passage of Board Bill one-nine-three.
Move by Alderman from the seventh, seconded by Alderman from the twentieth. All in favor, please proceed.
I renew my motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we, third reading and final pass, Board Bill number one-ninety-three. Any further discussion? No further discussion? There's been a request for previous roll. There's been an objection to previous roll. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortmann, Alderman Vollmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnoldowitz, Alderman Wessels, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Florida, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vicaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Crewson, President Reed.
No.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman French, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter. Eighteen aye votes, five no votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion of Alderwoman from the seventh and third read and finally pass, Board Bill number one-ninety-three. Alderman from the third.
I'm Mr. President, members of the board. It gives me great pleasure to be able to introduce Mavis Thompson, who is the new collector revenue for the city of St. Louis. So she's sitting here beside me.
The new license collector.
I mean licensed collectors. Well, that collector revenue's giving me a tough time.
Gives everybody a tough time. Welcome and congratulations. Congratulations. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Board Bill one-seventy-nine, sponsored by Alderman Williamson and ordinance approving a blinding study and a redevelopment plan for Arlington Grove Phase Two Redevelopment Area and containing a severability clause.
Alderman from the twenty-sixth, you recognize on the third reading and final passage of Board Bill number one-seventy-nine.
Mr. President, members of the board, I move for perfection of Board Bill passage of one-seventy-nine.
A third reading and final pass of Board Bill number one-seventy-nine. Move by Alderman from the twenty-sixth. Entertaining second all in motion. Seconded by Alderman from the fifteenth, Alderman from the twenty-sixth. Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we, third reading and final pass, Board Bill number one-seventy-nine. Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortmann, Alderman Vollmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnoldowitz, Alderman Wessels, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Florida, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vicaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Crewson, President Reed, Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Carter, twenty-two, aye votes, one abstained.
By your vote, you have third read and finally pass Board Bill number one-seventy-nine.
Board Bill one-forty-three, Committee Substitute, sponsored by Alderman Conway, Alderwoman Florida, Alderman Cohn, and Ortmann and ordinance designating the iris as the official flower of the city of St. Louis and containing an effective date clause.
Alderman from the eighth, you recognize on third reading and final passes of Board Bill number one-four-three.
Good morning, Mr. President, members of the board. I would move for third reading and final passage of Board Bill number one-forty-three.
Committee Substitute.
Committee Substitute.
Been moved by Alderman from the eighth and saying the second about Alderman from the twenty-sixth. Alderman from the eighth, please proceed.
This board bill makes, which I didn't realize, the iris, the official flower of the city of St. Louis. We're fortunate today that we have former Alderman Dan McGuire from the twenty-eighth ward with us. Back in the old days, we'll give him a little hand. Besides being our free acting parliamentarian, grammatical, and English enforcer, he was very knowledgeable about the city of St. Louis's history. And what he pointed out to us is that the iris was a flower that the King of France decided to make that his family symbol. And the reason he had done that is at one point in time in the sixth century, as legend might have it, the French had to flee an overwhelming force and go across a river. And there's doubt as to which river that might be. And that's why we have a committee substitute. We're not exactly certain as to the history there. But he didn't know where to cross the river. But the one thing is, is when he approached the river, he saw the irises on the other side and irises grow in shallower water. And he was able to follow the iris path and get across the river, save the French forces. Eventually, that became his symbol. And then St. Louis adopted that symbol many, many years ago. It's in our city flag. It is on many of the things that represent the city of St. Louis, the fleur de lis, which is really an iris. It is also native to the state of Missouri. So we're not like just picking some German or French flower and making it our city flower. So with that said, I would ask for your support in final passage, Board Bill number one-forty-three. And then when we come back, I guess the Alderwoman from the fifth ward, since she's in red and she's the only one in red today. She, oh, that's maroon Alderwoman. And she can make the Cardinal the official bird of the city of St. Louis.
Actually, it's a good idea. Been moved by Alderman from the eighth, seconded by Alderman from the twenty-sixth. Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, please call the row.
Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Hubbard, Alderwoman Ingracia, Alderwoman Young, Alderman Conway, Alderman Ortmann, Alderman Vollmer, Alderman Villa, Alderman Arnoldowitz, Alderman Wessels, Alderwoman Howard, Alderwoman Florida, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Rhodey, Alderman Kennedy, Alderwoman Davis, Alderman Schmidt, Alderman French, Alderman Boyd, Alderman Vicaro, Alderman Ogilvy, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Cohn, Alderman Williamson, Alderman Carter, Alderwoman Crewson, President Reed, Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Flowers, Alderman Bosley, Alderman Moore, Alderwoman Behringer, Alderman Carter, twenty-four, aye votes.
By your vote, you stay in the motion of Alderman from the eighth and third read and finally pass, Board Bill number one-four-three, Committee Substitute.
That's the extent of third reading, report of engrossments. That's the extent of third reading, report of engrossment and final passage.
Report of enrollment.
Board Bills one ninety-one, one eighty-four, one twenty-one, one seventy-one, one ninety, one eighty-seven, one eighty-eight, one eighty-nine, one twenty-six, one forty-four, one eighty-two, one forty-nine, one seventy-nine, one ninety-three, one forty-three Committee Substitute, three, one forty-four, one forty-five, excuse me, one forty-eight, one ninety-four, one twenty-five, one thirty-six, one thirty-seven, one thirty-eight, one thirty-nine, one eighty-three, one ninety-five, one ninety-six, and one ninety-seven.
All other business being suspended, the president shall in open session fix a signature here too, to the end that these may become law. I move for adoption on our courtesy resolution calendar, entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the twelfth, any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye. Oppose, motion carries. First read, first reading of resolutions?
We have none.
Second reading.
Resolution one thirty-six, sponsored by Alderman French, the Board of Aldermen directs the Parks and Environmental Matters Committee of this Board to convene hearings for the purpose of examining and investigating the events, conditions, circumstances, and failures that led to Mr. Sorsky and Mr. Daka's indictments.
Alderman from the twenty-first, you recognize on the second reading of resolution number one three-six.
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I move for passage of Resolution one thirty-six.
Moved by Alderman from the twenty-first, entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the sixth, Alderman from the twenty-first, please proceed.
Thank you, Mr. President. Resolution one thirty-six is just the Board of Aldermen asking the Parks Committee to take a look at the circumstances surrounding recent indictments in the Parks Department. Uh, we met this morning as the Parks Committee, we voted this thing out. Um, you know, I, I think a lot of the conversation in the committee today emphasized that no one's looking for a witch hunt here, uh, but we do believe that it is our responsibility as the people's house here to examine what happened, um, to ask the right people the right questions, and to make sure that it does not happen again. Uh, and so with that, I, I renew my motion.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved and seconded that we, that we adopt Resolution number one thirty-six. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose? It's been a requ- been a request for roll call, it's actually out of time. It's been, aye, oppose? By your vote, you adopt Resolution number one three-six.
That's the extent of second reading resolutions.
Miss land's unfinished business.
We have none.
Announcements.
Breakfast was provided for our hour and associates, for Aldermen and staff. Tuesday, Ways and Means Committee meeting in the Kennedy Room. Wednesday, Housing Meeting, ten a.m. in the Kennedy Room. Friday, Full Board Meeting, ten a.m. in the chambers. That's the extent of my announcements.
Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderman from the twenty-eighth.
Morning, Mr. President, members of the board. I'd like to, uh, remind everyone that the Central West End Halloween festivities are underway this Saturday. I know that we are all anxiously awaiting the ballgame on Saturday night, but, what ballgame? Yeah, on Saturday night, but there are three components. At eleven o'clock in the morning, the kids have a Central West End costume contest, a little parade, and trick-or-treating at each of the businesses. At one o'clock, you can bring your puppies in their costumes for a dog costume contest, and at eight p.m., it's an adult, um, costume contest and party in the Central West End. Recommend adults for the evening event. Thanks.
Alderman from the twenty-sixth.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. Next week, Wednesday, the thirtieth, we'll be having our monthly ward meetings. We normally do it on Thursday. The thirty-first is Halloween, so we're gonna have it on the thirtieth, and that will be located at Union Memorial Church at six-thirty. Our guest speaker will be Captain Spicer of the Police Department of the Seventh District, and we'll also have some representatives from the Kip School, Elementary Kip School that is moving in the community, uh, where the Mitchell School used to be located on Clara and Maple, so we'll have some administrators come in and talk to some of our residents about Kip School moving into the community, so we hope that everybody comes out. That's Wednesday, the thirtieth, six-thirty, Union Memorial Church. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further, Alderman from the twenty-second.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the board. I want to, uh, make a couple of cheap plugs for Sunday. On Sunday, I will be celebrating my twenty-third wedding anniversary, so happy anniversary to my wife.
Smart man.
And happy forty-fifth anniversary to my mother on Sunday.
Oh, wow. Alderman from the twenty-sixth.
Also like to recognize the city of St. Louis treasure, Mrs. Tashari Jones is our special guest here today too. Thank you.
Alderman from the sixth.
Just wanted to remind everybody that the St. Louis City Treasures Neighborhood Forums had, the first one was pushed back to ensure everyone could enjoy the World Series, so November seventh will be the first date for that, and you can look on the Treasures website for more information.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Any further, Alderman from the eighteenth.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the board. Would you also be sure that Board Bill two sixteen is on the agenda for the Ways and Means Committee meeting?
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
You have it there. Also, what, what the committee is doing that is a little bit different is that we are reviewing the budget quarterly, so we're looking at the first quarter report of the, of this year's budget, and so any other Alderman are also welcome to come to the meeting.
All right, thank you. Any further announcements? Any further announcements? Also, Sherry Bill sent me a note up here. She said, "Today is the last day to turn in your charity forms. Any questions, please contact her." Also, at, on the twenty-nine-hundred block, actually, twenty-eight-hundred through the twenty-nine-hundred block of, of Cherokee, on Thursday, they'll, they will be having a whole Halloween party up there for residents and some of the kids and stuff, so bring some of the kids through there this week also. Alderman from the thirteen, you recognize on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to excuse the Alderman from the first, fourth, sixteenth, and twenty-seventh wards due to necessary absence.
Moved by Alderman from the thirteenth, uh, seconded by Alderman from the twelfth. Any discussion? All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. I was just told it's Sam Moore's, Alderman Sam Moore's birthday, you know, he's still laid up and bed, he's watching us on TV, so let's give him a round of applause, tell him happy birthday. On Halloween. Alderman from thirteen, you recognize on the motion adjourned.
Thank you, Mr. President. I move to adjourn the meeting until Friday, ten a.m., November first.
Moved by Alderman from, from thirteen, entertain a second on that motion. Seconded by Alderman from the fourteenth, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Oppose, motion carries. Stand adjourned.